All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Our dream is to completely fill the chamber, and it's getting close to being realized. So, thank you. Thank you for your involvement in running and the management of our city. It does make a positive difference when we have input from residents. I do want to remind everyone that this is a regular city council meeting. It's not a town hall meeting. So, the rules of decorum are in place. At this time, please turn off your cell phones and put them away. Use of phones is prohibited except for purposes explicitly authorized by state law. Texas Government Code Section 551.023. Also, please refrain from any conversations during the meeting or calling out because we are a large group. If you have a comment to make, please raise your hand, and if appropriate, I will call you to come to the podium. It is important that you speak from the podium this evening for the official recording of this meeting and for those who are on Zoom with us. When you approach the podium, please state your name and ward number, which is needed for that official record. So, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Indivisible, infinite. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum this evening with no members absent. And City Secretary, do we have proof of notice?
Yes, the notice was posted on September 16th by 2:00 P.M.
Thank you. City Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes. First up, we have Jeannie Chopless, property owner in Ward 1, 2, and 3. She will comment on the continuance of the Airport Board, which would be ordinance 2022-09.
Thank you. Jeannie, would you approach the podium? And please speak into the microphone, your name and wards.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Chopless. We, our house is out of town, but we have property in wards 1, 2, and 3, a hangar at the airport, and other property in town. And although the Airport Board has dwindled over the past, you know, I'm sure the COVID situation did not help having meetings and things like that. We feel that it is important to continue the Airport Board, and we have applications here with names on them to be submitted, to be, you know, to be thought over for members to that board. And basically, I just wanted to voice our opinion that it needs to stay in place and be an asset to the city and the community.
All right. Thank you, Jeannie. City Secretary?
Okay, next up, we do have Isabel Blair, Ward 1. Isabel, we do require further rules of procedure that you make a comment about an agenda item. Which agenda item? Okay, that's ordinance 2022-09.
Okay, thank you. And please, your name and ward.
My name is Isabel Blair. I live south of town, but I do have property in Ward 1. I was the secretary to the Alpine, to the Airport Board for four years. And for your record, the Board met 11 times in 2021. And in 2022, we met twice in February and April. And that's with only four appointed members because three years ago, one of our board members resigned, and his recommended and willing replacement was denied by city administration. At the time, the reason being the city was in the process of reviewing procedures for city boards. And that was three years ago, and since then, others have come forward, but the answer from City Hall remained the same. Megan knows well the help the city has received from this board. It is this board in 2018 and again in 2019 that put the wheels in motion for four crucial capital improvement projects. Our runway light replacement, our master plan update, the replacement of our automated weather system, and the rehabilitation of our primary runway. It's this board that surveyed and analyzed the aviation market and recommended and city council approved raising our markup on jet fuel. So, since June of 2019, the airport has been bringing in an extra well over $65,000 a year in net profit. Net profit above and beyond anything we were collecting before. I don't have the numbers, but the tally is well over $200,000 at this point. I don't have time to list all the things that this board has accomplished, but Megan can. And I think, I believe Megan has valued the input from this board. The board is part of your checks and balances, and it's also a tool that is available to you when you want a recommendation or when you want something, reference aviation, aviation matters. It's a very particular field. For personal reasons, my husband and I resigned in May, and our chairman of the board resigned last month. And I'm just here to ask you to please do some appointing to this board. Don't dissolve it. We have a better airport today because this board exists, not in spite of it. So, I'd ask you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Kate Woodward, Ward 1, and he wants to comment on ordinance 2022-09.
Hello, Kate Woodward, Ward 1. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My voice isn't nearly as pleasant as this. Bear with me. So, a little bit about what the Airport Advisory Board is. It's basically a group of individuals with aviation experience or just a love of aviation or pilots or hangar owners or there's people that live in town that have an interest in aviation. It's not exclusive to anybody. But it does generally entail people with some kind of profession that can bring expertise to the table. Some of the benefits, they're in place to advise you as city council, and that's concerning airport information. It's a broad spectrum of different perspectives. It's not just an individual person or a group of people. It's an array of people that use the airport and understand how the airport works and can basically bring information to you to make decisions. Members generally provide information that's perspective-based on actual experience, knowledge obtained from involvement in aviation. What does this cost the city? These are all volunteer members. To my knowledge, no member of the Airport Advisory Board has ever been compensated for their time or effort. Again, that's to my knowledge. I don't believe that they've ever had. The meetings are generally held during business hours. So, our city staff are hired to accommodate the meetings on regular hours of business, and it doesn't have to pay any overtime or anything extra there. The airport pays an administrative fee of $40,000 to $50,000 a year. That could be even higher this year. I haven't seen any figures recently. That money goes to help out and facilitate certain things like that. Currently, the board is only two members, which is not a quorum, so it's not necessarily board. And Isabel explained basically why that is, that members, as time naturally progresses, they move away or for other reasons are off the board. Some of them are very frustrated that their efforts have kind of gone, you know, unheated. But anyway, the city administration has been unwilling to present new people that want to serve. And I've got a list of people. A lot of them are here today. They're ready and willing to serve. But they just don't know how to go about doing it. You, each one of these city councils, council members have a board member that represents you, and you can reach out to them and ask them questions or come visit. You know, Judy's been out to the airport and talked with me about stuff. That's what it's designed for. The Airport Board doesn't dictate policy. It only advises you as city council to make decisions. So, it's just a tool in your toolbox to help you. There's really, not really any negative effects that I know of to having the Airport Board. Some of the members who are here, or actually, I'll just name off a few names.
That's the three minimum, three minimum.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
And next up, we have Mr. Rick Stevens, Ward 5. Mr. Stevens, city ordinance requires that public comments are limited to agenda items only. This must be indicated on the public comment card. What agenda would you like to speak on?
It's actually item 9-2. Okay, and my topic, same on the boards and commissions. I won't spend the time echoing the comments that have already been made relative to what was called the Alpine Advisory Board, recommended now to be called the Airport Advisory Board. I strongly recommend it continue to be a board as president to provide advice to you all. As another city council, I've been sent on that bench for seven years. It is truly important and the right way to get information for which you to make decisions. I would tell you, even at the federal level, the federal aviation asks for support from members of AOPA and WEA because they too recognize that they've got to make decisions, but getting input from general aviation pilots is critically important for the decisions you need to make. I'd also offer that, you know, one of the things that aviation brings to the table is good knowledge of the airport assistance requirements, which are tied to the grants that the city council applies for. And meeting the 39 assurances is an important element of being able to maintain that we can get funds from a federal perspective. So, I strongly encourage the council to include, that is currently deleted, to add the Alpine Airport Advisory Board back in as its element relative to the first reading ordinance. Second, I'd comment also, it's about the transportation board. The transportation board, unfortunately, a number of members of council did not have members of the transportation board. That too was eliminated, having participated on a number of the studies while on council. There is a huge influx of traffic coming to Alpine. The whole purpose of the Transportation Committee was aimed at giving the city council some recommendations about what funds to apply for. Currently, if you look at the intersections in Alpine, they are rated by Tax dot as B through F. F meaning that would fail, and funding you're getting looks out 10 years. And if the city does not go after that funding in 10 years, you'll end up with all the intersections rated F. That means you stop transportation in the city of Alpine. So, I recommend that you add that back in as well and then appoint members so they can provide advice to you. And they can go get the training that's necessary for transportation. And Chris Webber over at Tax dot is a strong element in terms of what goes on in Alpine and at the Texas Department of Transportation. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And next up, we do have Naomi Hernandez, Ward 2. Mr. Hernandez, which agenda item will you be commenting on this evening?
It's about my community center. I'm talking about water agreement. I don't know what it, this is my first time.
Sandra, I mean, sorry.
Naomi.
You don't have anything on the agenda yet? Okay, so in order to proceed with that comment, we'll need a motion, a second, and a majority vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry. What did you say you were here to speak on?
Um, I work for Big Ben Community Action Committee, and I was here going to talk about a water agreement that I already sent to the city. It's just that I get a lot of calls every day, and I already sent them to Mika. I already sent her the updated thing. I'm just waiting for them to give me their approval because everybody needs water. And in this program, we will-
Just hold on on the presentation because I just needed, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I moved that we allow her to speak.
Okay. I need a second, please.
I'll say it.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Naomi Hernandez.
Sorry. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Give me a minute.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. First time. I apologize.
We're all nervous, so.
Yeah.
It's funny, because I only talk to people on the phone, so this is different. Okay, like I said, I work for Big Ben Community Action Committee. We're a nonprofit organization. In my job in my community center, I help people with their utilities, which is their electric, gas, and propane. It is an income-based. We just got through getting the water agreement, which is the light walk. In disagreement, we're allowed to help people pay deposits if they're disconnected, fixing to disconnect or their current bill. I already sent Ms. Megan the agreement. As soon as a document for the client will be signing, letting them they will only pay their portion because all we cover is the water and sewer. They won't have to pay the garbage. I've just been waiting, and then everybody's been telling me, has it got proof? I'm like, no. I mean, I get calls every day. I have elderly people who are on fixed income, disabled people, mothers. And some of them are disconnected, and there's nothing I can do. I mean, this lies on y'all. I wish, I also cover a marathon and training, but they jumped on board right away. I mean, it's something we need and if, because it's most likely, it's a new program. They're going to see how well it goes. So, if we don't do well, they're going to take it away. And I don't want that to happen because water's life. Everybody needs water, especially my elderly. That's my main course is my elderly because nobody speaks for them. I am their voice sometimes.
That will be all. Thank you, Naomi.
And next up, we have Mr. Brett Bell, Ward 1. And Mr. Bell, which agenda item would you comment on today?
It's not, it's just a general comment.
Okay, and we would need a motion, a second, and a majority vote to continue with that comment.
Comments on what, sir?
Just some of the code enforcement that's been going on. There's just, I think, a couple of issues that even people who are listening and people here, they just need to know that's and how citizens can help with the city.
Are you speaking on the weeds? The weed notification, okay. That is in the mayor report.
Okay. We can do that on the mayor report.
Right.
All right. Good evening. My name's Brett Bell, Ward 1. Just commenting that I know we're seeing more and more notices, which is great for our code enforcement. I, of course, shame on me. I had a trailer. It was parked on the road, but it kind of helped out. The problem with that was that our code enforcement, which, nothing against them, I'm not going to badmouth them at all. They put the notice on there, said, hey, we tried to contact the owner. I was home. I was actually outside, and nobody contacted me. The, I, we also have seen in our neighborhood in the carpenter edition that we're getting notices on our fences in the alleyway. Nobody's been in contact. I mean, I know it's just first notice, but it'd be nice to actually have a one-on-one because if I have a question about ordinance, the person I'd love to talk to is someone who's enforcing it because they know their job. That being said, I also wanted to throw in, my wife and I, Danielle Bell, or we started Asphalt Avengers because in our neighborhood with potholes, I've figured out how to fill those potholes in a very well-to-do manner to take the ease off of our city workers because, as we know, our city workers work hard. They are not paid even in fraction of what they're worth. But we have that out there to help as well. So, and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And that concludes public comments, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your participation, everyone. We appreciate it. So, moving on to no presentations, recommendations, or proclamations, moving on to the city mayor report. So, I've been keeping council apprised as to what I'm hearing in the meet with the mayors at the farmer's market on Saturday, and then last night was at the Granada. A lot of citizens did complain about the weed notifications that it had been raining, and they hadn't had the opportunity to take care of the weeds. So, they did mention that. Also, streetlights and the downtown events, the organizers of Art Walk are concerned about the streetlights, and just want us to take an additional look at that and see if there's anything-
That was the map I presented.
Right, right. Yeah.
They're working on it.
I did. They met with me at the farmer's market this past Saturday before. And a comment that one of the residents made was, can we get inmates possibly to help with cleanups or to help with the roads and the potholes? And the city manager and I discussed that. There's a lot of issues that you have to work through. It has to be in agreement with the sheriff's department. And then there's only certain types of inmate trustees that are allowed to go out and do that. But that is something that we're looking at, and I want the residents to know that when you are offering these suggestions, we do look at them and consider them seriously. Also, phone calls that I have received. One individual's concerned about a homeless population of individuals that live in a certain area of the city, and they want to know what kind of plan do we have? Are we in the works of trying to develop a plan? What can we do to help these individuals who are homeless and to help the people who live near the homeless camps? And then also on City Talk, one resident called in and said, is there something the city can do for goat heads? You know, when the world ends, what's going to be left are goat heads and roaches. So, they thought maybe the city could partner with True Value or somebody to get coupons to hand out to residents so they could get something that might kill the goat heads, some kind of herbicide or something along that line. And so, last night at the Granada, it was a really good meet with the mayor. Residents are starting to take a more active role in offering ideas and solutions, such as Mr. Bell with his Asphalt Avengers going out and filling just minor potholes that he can fill. And also, somebody had mentioned, and I found out that this was something that Councilmember Johnson had brought forth in the past, recent past, from what I understand, is maybe having a donation box on the utility bill where you can check the box and donate a dollar towards some type of project. And I spoke with the city manager about that, and she's looking into all the legalities and what would be required in order for us to have something like that. And that concludes the mayor report. So, we have no city attorney report, no city manager report, staff update. Mr. DuVaney, if you've come forward, please. This is from Building Services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Very good turnout. Thank you for being here, definitely. Can you hear me?
We can.
It's kind of brief. I've been on the job two months. Love it. Love it. I've worked with some great team members in my previous cities, but it's very good out here, although we're limited, small staff. But Jessica and Adalina are truly valuable for what we do. Can't say enough good things about them. We could start off in July. Of course, I started mid-July, so I don't have the totals pre, but we had a total of 42 permit types. We go through the numbers. Yeah, we got the screenshots. Electric plumbing, building certificate, occupancy, short-term rentals, film signs, H-bag, 45 inspections, might be a little more because we've done a lot of courtesy, go out on job sites, let them know my expectations. So, it's numbers a little more skewed on that. Total permits paid, little over $5,500, with a total city valuation of $557,316.54. August, a little bit higher, three total permits. Electric 11, plumbing same, building 16, COs, replat, Dollar General signs, mechanical change outs paid. Lower on inspections, 39 total permits paid, $9,242.36. The city valuation, total labor value of the projects, little over $1 million. So, we're seeing a good change in that. Same thing, slug, yeah, code enforcement, gentleman was saying we are taking weeds a little more seriously. We know the rain. It's hindered everybody, but just in driving around, I definitely appreciate everybody out there. I'm just trying to make Alpine beautiful. We will make some corrections or any more adjustments to what we have to do to make sure we get the property owners contacted. So, there's no surprises. So, that's definitely on me. I'll work on that. We've activated code cases for the abatement demolition. This was before I started. If I'm not mistaken, I don't have the number in front of me, but I think they were from 2019 on previous meetings for P&amp;Z about the demo alteration, repair, or abatement. So, we're working on the process to get all substandard out for life belt safety too, and it's going back to any grants or if anybody happens to go in, we want to protect the citizens, even if they're in there illegally. We've been working with the court system again for the demo process, making sure we got our i's crossed our t's so we don't have any hiccups if something unfortunate has to go for a bait. But we want to make sure we do it the right way. Weed, again, that's going to be the focus for the next couple of months. I don't know if the citizens can see that. It was kind of skewed. We had 87 violations. We resolved nine of them. I want to work to try to be in the build more just to resolve it as quick as possible. I'd like to see our resolutions go up, obviously. And we did sue two citations. Those weren't weed or anything related. That was more substandard. So, don't freak out. We're not going to issue citations for weeds. We completely get that. And again, I'm not from around here, so from what I hear, that's a lot more rain than what we were anticipating. So, we're definitely going to work with everybody. And kind of what's, what's new here? And I've worked in other municipalities and comparing new. You always compare where you are. And again, this is a great environment, great team. Megan's been wonderful to work with. G O, we're trying to update our codes, getting a new 2021 code cycle. So, it's a lengthy process. So, we'll come to y'all for approval, but it's just a matter of us getting out, training, hitting the builders, this is who we are. These are my expectations. Let me, they're vocalizing their expectations of me. So, it's definitely been good. Our contractors, we have some very good contractors around this area. So, that's very positive. It'll make our job easier because at the end of the day, we want to be developmental partners with everybody. It's not the city against builders. We want to do it all the right way, life belt safety to protect everybody, citizens of Alpine as well as staff. So, Skins Runway, drive-through located just south of Level Field, Level. They, we gave them a temporary CO. They had a couple of issues needed, but life belt safety-wise are good. I'm not sure of the opening date, but they will be able to have drive-through traffic, but not people patronizing and sitting down there just yet. So, we're working on a plan with them. So, we'll get them up and running through CO, hopefully. Annexation and replat of the plan, 20, Highway 118 for the new Dollar General. We've been discussing with that. So, that's, that's going good. Trying to schedule, since I'm new here, again, besides just talking with contractors, citizens out on job sites, we're going to have a more formal meeting with registered contractors here. So, I'll make a presentation, my expectations, their expectations, developmental partners. Hey, let's work together and build some good projects here in Alpine. Jessica and I had the privilege to go to the boat conference in Georgetown in August. That was the Building Officials Association of Texas. Had some very good knowledge there at the network alive with building officials from across the state, some I'd already known from previous employment. But they were going over significant changes new to the 2021 IBC, RC, 2020 NEC. Just a great conference for us to get the knowledge that I can tell the contractors here anything that I might have missed in our code books just to keep everybody on the same page because there are a lot of new safety updates that a lot of people aren't aware of. So, it's just to get everybody, it was wonderful. We learned a lot there. Alpine ISD had worked there under temporary CO order. Now, we were able to walk through life belt safety. Everything is good on the new high school. The CO is, the TCO is based off the demo project, haven't been stopped for their previous. So, once that's done, we'll do another couple of inspections. So, they'll be on their way for CO. Game Room at 1906 Highway 9, just west of us here. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's Lucky Store. I don't know the name of it. I think it's Lucky Store. I think it's like South. They received their certificate, certificate, excuse me, of occupancy and they're up and up and running. And we're in a very, it's at the infancy stage, but we're getting a proposal. I think they're out in Nebraska having an ESS system storage here. It's an energy store system, lithium ion batteries, high hazard area. So we're going to make sure we do that right and according to all our law code and the ordinances, if they want to be able to put that inside the city limits. I'm with in contact with Mr. Pierce Archie here. And I've spoken with other cities around the state. They've only put one in permanently in the state of Texas. So it's real brand new here, but they have several that they want to do in West Texas for energy stores for obvious reasons. Other than that, again, it's, I love it out here. I'm looking forward to serving the fine citizens Alpine for as long as good Lord willing. Do y'all have any questions or concerns?
Talking Ryan, he tells me that I can try it out Saturday, one line.
Okay. Yeah, so he, he's perfect with that.
Don't call it a beer barn now, because he doesn't.
No. We'll definitely get him on the path to successful full CEO, just whenever he's ready.
Well, thank you. It's August that you came in best running.
Yeah, it's been busy.
The weeds and all that, that's something that, you know, they hadn't had a chance to address and with the rains, it wasn't a must of an issue. But we always know that people complaining, someone's doing their job.
We're trying. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Adalina, Environmental Services.
Good evening, council, council members. I'm doing the environmental services report this evening. I'll be discussing the recycling center stats, the Alpine High School demo project update, the twenty-twenty-two monthly pickup totals, illegal dumping abatement totals, and keep up on beautiful update. This first first slide is the number of visitors. We're sixty-six percent Alpine residents and thirty-four percent outside city or in Brewster County. Our monthly average is three hundred thirty-nine Alpine residents and one seventy-three outside city. These are our totals for drop-offs for each item. And we have one part-time position for recycling tech open at this time. The next slide, this is the the ending tonnage for the landfill. For C and D, for C and D tons, we were left with three hundred oh two tons. If you municipal solid waste, we had three hundred and thirty-nine left for the year. We're starting our our new year this month. Total recycled were four hundred eighty US tons, which approximates twenty-four days of landfill space. Here are the bulky recycling center halls. So far, we have all forty-three tons of bulky and thirteen point thirty-six of metal, scrap metal, with a total of three hundred and eighty-five drop-ups for bulky and two hundred forty-three for metal. Next slide is the Alpine High School demo project. In August, we added road construction to that tonnage. Our bulky pickup and illegal abatement totals. So far, we have twenty-three point ten tons for bulky tonnage and eleven point fifty-three tons for illegal abatement so far, with a total of thirty-four point sixty-three tons. Our keep up on beautiful update, we had a community service cleanup, the city and county, July fourteenth. Approximately two thousand pounds of trash was collected and fifty tires. We clean up an area around point two eight acres. And after this event, the county recycle almost fourteen tons of tires after the event. Our second community cleanup was July sixteenth. We cleaned the cactus garden east of McDonald's and two point eight acre area with three hundred seventy-five pounds of trash, eighteen volunteers. We had a great turnout. There were like three encampments in that little cactus garden. Also, community outreach with we did in August, we did the Sora's Career Fair, Fiesta Day, and Sora's Fall in the Mall. Also an update on the Apache tree grant, we applied August eighth. And these are the species we submitted for the tree giveaway, total of five hundred trees. I still haven't heard if we got approved for the grant, but this is a tentative flyer on the like. Also, our next committee cleanup will be this Saturday, September twenty-four, twenty-fourth, and we're meeting at Medina Park. And we're going to clean street streets and and areas around the park and focus on the Alpine Creek. So hopefully people come up and tell. Also, our next bulky pickup is October twenty-twenty-two. We can schedule pickup starting next Monday, Monday the twenty-sixth to Friday the thirtieth before before lunch. And contact TDS at four three two eight three seven zero eight four five. And then the last slide is just links and information to our CD and Facebook page. It would be on Texas Arbor Day, November fourth and fifth. But we haven't got the approval yet. As soon as we do, I'll let everybody know.
Thanks. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Adeline. Okay, moving on to public hearings, public hearing to obtain system view and views and comments regarding the second final reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh nine dash oh one and ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two budget. Is there anyone here to comment on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda has four items. First one, approval of September sixth, twenty-twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the excused absence of Council Rodriguez from the September sixth, twenty-twenty-two regular city council meeting due to personal oneness. And three, approval of the appointment of Robert Savory to the war two position on the Building and Standards Commission. Item four, approval of a five-year contract with logic for the Alpine Police Department records management system.
Okay, I hear a motion.
I would like to pull number three. And I move to prove the rest.
Okay, so we pulled number three. We have a motion to approve the rest. I have a second. Okay, discussion. Hey, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, one, two, and four, very unanimously. Okay, moving back to number three, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Excuse me, on that, I'd like to table that. I'm going to table.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, so motion fails to table. So motion fails.
Does.
Does. All right, moving on. Information or discussion items. Okay, the first one, city manager.
So I have Marcy stuck with me here tonight. She's our grant writer. I'm really excited. We've been talking about this for about a year now, starting our strategic plan. So we've put together a little presentation to get the ball rolling. You let me share. Lots and lots of research and conversations. For those of you don't know, Marcy is also a planner by nature. She does have her certifications for that. So utilizing more of our asset here, we sat down and talked once before, timing was a little off. So we kind of postponed it a little bit. But ideally, what we want to do as a city is we want to get, of course, everyone involved. We want to get everyone's input and moving forward to help with not only what the future of Alpine will look like, but to need that Alpine. And how do we address them? How do we properly budget for them? And a lot of this does take the community, we need your input. And so we're trying to create a direction prioritized for the city's needs and opportunities based on not only our public, our employees, elected officials input, but also sound fiscal policies. Kind of the goal here. And our strategic plan process. Both of us have kind of done some research on how we want to move forward with this, and we came up with six steps. And one, identify your city's vision for the plan or what primary topics the plan will address. Gather people, our public, city employees, elected officials, and record the input. Analyze the results from the data to determine what are our top priorities, goals, and actionable items. Formulate a plan based on these priority goals and actionable items. Adopt the executive strategic plan as a guiding document for the city, including being part of the annual budget. So we've used this to determine what are we going to budget for? What are our priorities, the projects that we're going to address, what goals are we going to meet for one year, three years, five? And of course, the biggest and second most important is monitoring and reevaluating. Can't put a plan in place if we don't go back and say, hey, we did this, or maybe we didn't do this, or why is this being delayed? So these are the the process we're going to move forward. And one of the big things we talked about was getting the public involved. And so I had reached out to all of council and inquired about, tell us where you'd like to meet. I'd like to do two meetings a month for October, November, December. I did get to visit with Martine and Sarah. I'm going to grab her after today's meeting, so that we represent the five wards. So a meeting within the five wards and then the mayor hosting one as well, so that we would have the six meetings to October, to November, and to December. So as of today, on, we have Ward one for Wednesday, October nineteenth, at the Alpine Elementary School at six PM. We have Ward two, Monday, October third. They're going to, she's going to start our strategic plan town halls here at the Alpine Civic Center at five thirty. And I'll speak with Sarah so we can get that one set up, so it's to be determined. I spoke with Martine and we're going to do his in December. We'll have the date confirmed later after I contact the library, so we can utilize their public space. Ward five will be Thursday, November seventeenth, at the Visitor Center Pavilion at five thirty PM. And then the mayor chose Saturday, November fifth, at the Granada Event Space at two PM. So these are all within outside business hours, so that we can try and encompass as much of the public as possible. And we want to hear your voices. We want people to actively participate. And we want you to attend one or all of them. And there may be a date that doesn't meet with your schedule and it's your ward. That's okay, come to another wards meeting. We just really want to get everyone involved so that they can get the information to us.
Megan, what time was the November seventeenth?
At five thirty. So when looking at other cities and discussing kind of how other people have done this, we came up with some of our own topics to help narrow down everyone's comments. So each of the six public meetings will encourage citizens to provide their thoughts for and ideas for five topics. Transparent government, strong and resilient economy, safe and flourishing neighborhoods, sustainable infrastructure, and effective and efficient services. And we pulled these based off of everything we've basically heard from the past year, not only from the residents, but from council, from employees, and came up with these topics so that we could get more detailed information so that we could address these. At each of these meetings, we will have basically big poster boards for everyone to put their sticky notes. So when you walk in, you'll get some sticky notes and you can write, you know, I want all the poples on South Fifth fixed. And you put it on your. You get all of your ideas out there and you put your wants on these poster boards addressing these specific topics. And then we'll have, I call it the parking lot. I think Marcy called it the catch-all. So anything that may not fit within this realm, you put it on a separate one, so that we can get that information, because it may be something very valuable, but doesn't quite meet these bubbles. And the meetings will be designed to last about an hour, no more than two hours. Really just a little introduction, and then we really just want you to give us all of your information. Go around, visit with your neighbors, your family, your friends, and put down your thoughts. If you want every popple face and you have fifteen sticky, use all fifteen stickies to put every popple. And they're not just designed for different topics. If you're really passionate about one, use them all for one. We encourage you to choose however you want. And some of the topics, we wanted to provide some examples of what we're looking for, things that may help further explain them. So for transparent government, one of the things we've all been working on is our ordinances. So having consistent regulations and forms, increase public outreach and input opportunities. Why we're having our town halls, create a strategic plan to guide for city decisions. Under strong and resilient economy, link economic and physical growth development. Revisit a Main Street program to strengthen downtown and business core. Local partnerships for childcare solutions, this has become an issue here in Alpine. Build an emergency fund for financial resilience. Under safe and flourishing neighborhoods, another topic that's been brought up is increase affordable housing stock. You know, we want people to move here, but they need to be able to afford to live here. Promote connections between law enforcement and neighborhoods. Create connections from neighborhoods to amenities, to be able to walk across from the south side to the north side safely. To be able to go from your house to the elementary school to make sure there's a sidewalk that guides you there and you're not having to kind of jump from area to area. Plan for quality of life amenities. These are your parks. These are the things, your relaxation, you come, you want to visit, you want to live here. Sustainable infrastructure. This one, of course, is probably the biggest. This is the one we hear the most complaints on. So create a capital asset replacement and capital improvement plan. This one would would develop what we currently have to a much more dedicated usable document that we know if we're going to plan for the future and equipment has to be replaced, we start putting that money aside. We start talking those long-term benefits. Currently, we really need to replace everything now. It's not financially easy to do. Implement a systematic upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant. You've heard me mention this on multiple occasions. You've heard the director of utilities mention this. You've heard the engineers mention this. It's important that we have a wastewater treatment plant that can sustain our usage. I mean, flush the toilet, you want to make sure it goes all the way down to where it belongs. And so this is a big one. Create a water and wastewater system capable of utilizing non-podable water. Currently, we try to provide water to the golf course. This is non-podable, this is drinking water. We're not able to, because our wastewater treatment plant isn't able to get to that stage in the game. And the number one priority is probably across the United States and every other country, establish a street repair and rebuild program. And we've talked about this in a meeting to better understand our street water. We just heard it a few meetings ago. Our gravity system, with the way the water moves into those creeks, it tears up our roads too. So we need to address that. Effective and efficient services, clear job descriptions and advancement opportunities for employees. Citywide software solutions, accurate billing and invoicing. All of these have been addressed through different employees, through myself, and even the public. I know Mr. Bell has stepped up in, you know, our invoicing, making sure we have this stuff in place and it's accurate. The opportunity for other items not represented by the five topics. This is the catch-all, the parking lot. So anything that doesn't quite fit within these five realms, we want to know. We want to know those ideas so that we can document it. And you may not be the only one. There may be someone else who has the same kind of issue. There'd be two sticky notes or three or four, so that we can get the information.
Right, I just want to jump in and say that the topics that we selected were meant to be as inclusive as possible and as broad as possible, you know, within a realm, but we don't want to limit it to that, hence the parking lot, as Megan says. So we, there's a space for everything on there. We, there's a space for everything on there.
So we also came up with a tentative schedule and some milestones. Um, I, the unplanned topics was, was completed. Those are the five. Those, like she mentioned, are, are the very open, broad, inclusive. Um, step two is gather input. So October through December, I hope to see everyone who's here at these meetings as well. This is your opportunity to take that colorful sticky note and tell us what you really want the city to, to move forward with. Um, what you want the future of Alpine to look like.
And we might even give you twenty stickies. We're not sure yet.
She's the analyzer for the data.
Yeah, so I'm leaning towards fifteen because I got to type everything in, but.
Um, the, the next part, um, between the end of, or middle of December, end of December into February is to actually take everything and analyze it. Um, look at and group them, you know, how many potholes, how many, you know, want a better water system, how many want other things? And, and get those all categorized in groups so we can present this to council, so we can start seeing what are our residents and, and the public really want to see.
And, and truly, this is why we need the people to show up. I mean, please tell your neighbors, encourage everybody. I made sure to put that youth that come, they get stickies too. I mean, kids have opinions on what needs to be, you know, in their community as well. And so I just like, everybody that shows up, we need all the stickies. We need we need everybody's voice and everybody's concerns and ideas represented because it's everybody's community.
Um, the next phase, after, you know, we have conversations, is to start creating the actual strategic plan. It's to look at what are the priorities and start designing the goals to meet those priorities, the actionable items to actually meet those goals. Um, so this isn't something we put on paper and walk away from. This is no, in order to meet this goal, we're going to buy a zipper so that we can tear up the roads. Um, or we're going to buy a new backhoe because we want to be able to accomplish this. We start seeing how we're going to accomplish all of these priorities and goals. Um, throughout this process, um, we may have some extra council meetings, um, some workshops so that we can discuss, so we can formulate. Um, it, it's not just their input, but it's council's input as well to make sure that when we have this final document, it's something that, you know, we're all very proud of. Um, then we actually adopt it. Um, looking at other cities, they typically go one, three, five. Some will do one, five, ten, twenty. Um, this is step one. I'd, I'd love a one-year, three-year approach, so that we know this year we're going to focus on these. And over the next two years, up to that third year, we're going to focus on additional priorities. And then, of course, monitoring it and evaluating it. So this would be, uh, employee and administrative responsibility, where you would get reports, um, however you want, monthly, quarterly, annually. Um, where we would come back and say, this is where we're at. The reason we didn't accomplish something or the reason why it's delayed is because maybe we can't get the machines to work. We need to replace a piece of equipment in order to meet the goal. Um, you've heard that it's across the nation, the, the supply and demand, everything's kind of, you know, backordered. But being able to have that explanation, not only to the public, but to council as well, you can see, okay, it hasn't been accomplished because. The other big thing is, is when we go through and then we adopt and execute on it, I, forgive me, is the whole budget process. This, this really will help determine your budget, so that you can see, okay, these are our priorities, these are our goals. This is what we're going to do action-wise, year one, action-wise, year two. So when you're looking at doing your budget and you have to make those hard decisions with increasing fees, with raising taxes, the public knows why you're doing it. It, it's not that we're going to raise it because we're going to raise it. It's like, no, we're going to raise it because we want to accomplish your priorities that we've all come together to agree upon, and this is how we can do it. So if we have to look at those fees and, and consider things, i- it's not just doing it to, to raise the money. It's no, we're doing it because we want to accomplish something. Um, I know I've said it, you know, it's like, yes, we need to pay. But I'd like to know, you're raising my taxes, you know, another four percent, three percent, you're going to go with the no voter level. Um, what are you paying? Are you buying equipment? Or are you paying my block? I mean, I want, I want to know, you're going to pay my, my, but I think everyone here wants to know if you're going to pay their block. Having that kind of laid out so people can see, this is an actionable plan to move forward. But it starts with the public participating with it. Any questions?
Are we going to also accept solutions from the public?
Any idea, solution? Um, I know people have said tear up the roads and put gravel. With you, except for our water and how the, uh, gravity, all that gravel would get washed down. Um, no, we, we want solutions, um, and it's not always easy, but we want to know. Um, we do foresee a little negativity because we do have some things we need to correct, and, but we want to hear it from you guys. Um, I know Marcy, myself, Geo, we can all sit up here and say the problems, um, but you may have a solution we don't know about. So we, we'd love to hear it. Um, as we go through the budget work, I'm sorry, the workshops to develop the actual strategic plan, I, we still want the whole public. I'm pretty sure the mayor would love for us to no longer have our meetings here because there's so many people worrying. Um, but we, we're really excited. Um, we're going to test Marcy on her ability to analyze.
Um, I can count stickies all day. Just give me the stickies.
Well, really, we're all excited and we'll hope that you guys all attend. Um, we tried to spread it out, like you said, over the three months. We'll get the two other dates settled in, and we're just really excited.
I'm assuming that we'll have something on the website.
Radio this Thursday. It'll be on the paper. It'll be on the website. It'll be on our Facebook pages. We have a LinkedIn page, um, that we posted our first post. Uh, kind of excited there. We're moving up in the social media world. Um, but yeah, we'll get it out.
Well, and if the, and I don't know if council members have like groups that they send out to their citizens. I don't know if, um, okay. Because if you have like a, no, just like a group blast of, you know, neighbors that you have a list of, you can just send that out to them too. I, I didn't know.
We'll get it out every weekend.
And it doesn't do it good for us to have a town hall meeting. You ought to be there with your ideas too.
Any other questions, comments, council?
Good job, Megan. Good job, Marcy.
All right, so moving on to information or discussion item number two. Um, this one has been withdrawn because the Streets Department has started working on what they needed to be worked on. So good job to Eddie and his team. So we'll move on to action.
I live in the Alpine Estates.
Okay, please come on in.
We just need a motion to second majority vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Vote. All in favor? Okay, name and ward, please.
Hi.
I really don't know my ward. I, I recently built a house in the Alpine Estates. Bye. Okay. My name is Cindy Samok and I'm from Ward Five, and I had a house built in the Alpine Estates and, um, moved, uh, here in Jet in June. And, um, I just want to say, thank you for doing that part of the road. Uh, but it seemed like, you know, they do just a little section and then the equipment leaves. And then it comes back in a couple more months and does, you know, a little bit more of a section. And I guess my question is, um, is it going to continue on? Are they going to go all the way up to Model One Drive? Redoing the road, or is it like, a certain amount of money is budgeted for a certain distance in the road?
Okay, it's still a discussion item.
Hundred thousand dollars set aside in our budget to continue improving the road that goes across the states.
Okay.
And we put a hundred thousand dollars in this, this fiscal year's budget, which ends the end of September, and we have another hundred in the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, for that road.
So we're working on the road a little at a time.
Okay.
In hopes of having it completed.
Right.
In, say, five years or whatever.
Okay, well, thank you.
Can I get your name?
Sandy Samok. S A M O, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to action items. Action item number one, city manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two oh-nine oh-one, and ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
I need a second.
Okay.
Discussion. See none. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, action item number two, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh-nine dash oh-two. An ordinance establishing Chapter Sixteen, Boards, Commissions, and Committees to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Amending processes, procedures, guidelines, and requirements for city boards, commissions, and committees.
I need a motion. Okay.
I think that needs some more work.
Okay. Do I have a second to postpone? Okay, discussion.
Okay, can we allow discussion if I have questions from the public if we're postponing it?
Not that I'm aware of. Can they repeat that if they have questions?
Right now, it's going to move.
So you'd have to go ahead and vote over it. And then after that, it would be postponed.
Okay, so vote on the motion. Okay.
But we won't be able to discuss it if we postpone. They're just going to come up and talk again.
So the council wouldn't be able to discuss it if you postpone it.
Can I have a question of Mr. Johnson?
Well, if you want to go ahead and, you know, not vote in favor of the postponement, you can dispose of it that way and then just have another motion to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, but before I vote, I guess I'm kind of wanting to know what he has in mind. Are we just? I mean, just postponing, i- if this has been something that we've been working on for months. And I guess my question is, are we postponing, uh, with hopes of setting up more workshops, or, or what, what are we, what are we doing?
Well, I think the Alpine Airport Advisory Board and the Transportation Board need some more forethought before we, uh, pass this motion to eliminate those two. I don't have a problem with this environmental and beautification board being combined with Parks and Recreation. But, uh, I do think we have a need for Airport Board if we can get people to belong to the board and they can have meetings with the board. And, uh, if that doesn't work out in six months, we can, uh, do away with that board. But I think right now, that board and the Transportation Board need some forethought before we eliminate.
Okay, so where does it go from here to?
So y'all just need to vote on the postponement.
A postponement means not for the next meeting, but into the future.
I, I understand what that means, but I'm asking is where would we go from here to? Are, i- is this going to be workshops? Are we going to do town hall?
It's really up to you all. If you'd like to continue to workshop it, you know, um, I drafted this on based on feedback from council, so. Uh, if you prefer to meet again, we can certainly meet again, or I can just make amendments myself and pose it again.
All right, so the parliamentarian rule is now we're voting on the postponement?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of postponing, raise your right hand. Okay, postponed unanimously. All right. Okay, action item number three, city manager.
Approve Resolution Twenty-twenty-two dash oh-nine dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Regional Solid Waste Grant Program.
Okay, I need a second. I'll say, discussion.
Megan, could you give the public a little bit of overview on what it is that we're voting on?
So this is one of the grants that I talked about, um, a couple of weeks ago. This is for tire disposal. This is to help offset the cost that the city would, um, be covering, um, through this grant. So we're estimating three, uh, tire cleanups, hoping that when we go through the grant process, we get two. Um, they always do make a little bit of budget cuts, um, based on the number of applicants that, that, uh, respond. This one is with the Rio Ground Council Governments with funds that they received from T C Q. And they're estimated to receive this year about seventy-one thousand dollars. And so we're trying to get a little piece of Alpine to help offset some of the tire disposals. It would be for tire disposal of non-commercial. So, um, this wouldn't be Oasis or Bams or any of the other places being able to dispose of. This would be for the.
It's the same thing that, that, uh, the county just did for us, but those tires, the same kind of a thing.
Kind of, yes.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously to approve the resolution. All right, action item number four, city manager.
Approve Resolution Twenty-twenty-two dash oh-nine dash one-eight, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the H E B and Central Market Green Bag Grant Program.
I need a motion. Okay, I need a second. Discussion.
So this grant, um, was kind of the last minute. They only opened the window for a few weeks. Um, we looked at different things that we could try to apply for. Um, Adalina has a project, um, it's the Coconut Park, um, Poets Grove. And so one of the things as part of this project is to put up a sign identifying this area. Um, these signs you can find throughout, uh, the city of Alpine and also within the county. There's one currently on Murphy Street. That kind of gives you a historical view of Murphy. There's a little QR code so you can get some more information. And so we thought, why not? We have enough information to be able to propose it, um, documentation, supporting material. So we're hoping to get a sign, um, so that we can put in that area to represent the Poets Grove and give a little bit of information history for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, carries unanimously to participate in the H E B program. All right, um, action item number five, city manager.
Approve American Legion Auxiliary Club to place a monument honoring women in the military and veterans.
Need a motion? Okay, I need a second. Discussion.
I have a question. We, on our radar, we're trying to just decide which parks we're going to keep, which we're going to get rid of, all that. Uh, and yet we're taking action on parks of adding things and all that. I'm just wondering where we are on that.
So they are visiting that, and last I spoke with Darren, they're looking at ways to maybe minimalize maintenance. Um, of course, the recommendation for most people is not to just give up parks. Um, this is the park that is located across from the American Legion. There's actually a monument already in this park, so they would be adding to it. Um, it's the, right between the jail and Legion. Um, so they're looking at that. Last I heard, they were looking at recommending to close or, or give back any parks.
Thank you.
I attended this meeting last night, and I think it's a great idea.
There's a little part to it. It's not much better.
I believe this would be the first monument in Alpine representing women in the military.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea too. I was just wondering where we were on that as far as making decisions and.
They're working on other ways to address the financial side of all.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries for the monument. Moving on to action item number six, city manager.
Approve the appointment of two alternative positions on the Building and Standards Commission from a list provided by the city manager. Advocants were Danielle Bell, B, Robert Staller, and C, Guy Fielder.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Robert Staller and Guy Fielder to the Building and Standards Commission.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, discussion.
Okay, either of those three, we're going to, to pick two, right?
Yes, that's what her motion is.
And yours, who are you wanting?
Uh, Robert Staller.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries four to one. All right, so that leads us to council member comments. Council member Stokes.
Um, I've already made my suggestions on town hall. We really need these town halls.
You know, years ago, I've been participating. Look at the neglect of Alpine, it's for people who aren't participating. We can't make the decisions by ourselves. Uh, thanks, Adalina. Thanks, Andrew, for keeping stand outside. I'd like to thank everyone for the comments on all this.
Let me. Let me remind you to please remain silent. Sorry, council member.
Like to thank everybody on their comments, on the airport board, on the transportation board. You know, a lot of this happened, these non-meetings you're talking about, we've had twenty-one meetings, nobody ever came to us. I've been up here, nobody stood here and gave a, a, a thing, and that, that's what these boards are supposed to do. I understand y'all were meeting. But you won't report it to us. So therefore, we didn't know that y'all met eleven times. We hear this tonight. But I didn't know. I mean, y'all may have known, I didn't know. I, I, I think there is a need for airport board, but if y'all are gonna meet and not report back to us, how are we gonna make a decision? So we, and we can't put members if nobody applies. I've been here a year and a half, not one application has been putting in, not one. So now when we get ready to do away with it, thinking y'all don't want to do it. All of a sudden, there's applications, people are wanting to do it, and that's good. If there's an interest, let's keep it. If there's not, let's get rid of it. And this is what will make these decisions. That, that's my opinion, so.
That's all I have to say. Thanks all for coming.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh. First of all, I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Bell. It's so easy for us to, for most of us to complain. But most of us don't step up and do something about it, so I do appreciate it. In regards to Ms. Stokes, I do. Uh, I, I just have a comment that it's not, we, I understand that it's not as simple as you just getting up and saying, I want to report. It has to be put on the agenda, uh, on the agenda. So it's not a matter of you just, you all being able to keep this updated. Uh, that is probably falls on us, that we need to ask for the boards to report to us. Uh, so I for myself take that upon us and, and, and I don't feel that it was your responsibility. Uh, I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Woodward, uh, Ms. Chopoulos, Ms. Blair, for coming in and letting us know. Um, it was a lot of good information, a lot of information that I myself did not know. Uh, Adalina does a wonderful job at doing grants. But I know that she probably appreciates having information, statistics and stuff like that from people that, that, that do the job, that understand it. So we do appreciate that you all provide that kind of information, information that we do need to go after all these grants and, and. We can't do it by ourselves. And for that, I thank you all.
Councilmember Candy.
I went out to the recycling center and I was really pleased with the way everything's running and the way everything looks. Adalina, I just want to thank her for all of her hard work. She really does do a great job in keeping Alpine beautiful, so. I do appreciate that.
Councilmember Stan Dotte.
I've got a comment on the inmates, inmates to help with cleaning up roads and potholes. I think there's a lot of liabilities in somebody out there on the road, you know. Insurance purposes, accidents, injuries.
Right.
Well, they use them to clean up after the, um. Whatever that music festival was down in the bar, I mean, down at. Um, Farmer's Market. Cause they were out there.
Jerry, they're only state inmates can come out, feds can't come out.
Well, I know, but they were there and they were cleaning up. I don't know, I know we have to have a memorandum of agreement with Sheriff's Department. But they were doing that and they were doing a great job.
They do, but we also have to keep in mind that this takes a lot of personnel for the sheriff's office. They do have to have. Guards with them at all times. So the sheriff's department has to make, uh, uh, adjustments for that to make sure that the jail is covered, yet someone is out with the inmates. So it's not as simple as just, will you help us? Uh, i- it, it is asking a lot of the sheriff too.
Councilmember Johnson.
Well, I just want to thank the council for the work we do, the city staff and the citizens of Alpine to, uh. Come and voice your opinions and keep us in line, hopefully, keep us informed. Thank you all.
And I also want to thank everybody for coming out. This is what we need. We need our council chambers filled. At every city council meeting and then also at the town halls that we have, we need you here, we need your input. Um, Jeannie, I wanted to thank you and Isabel and Cade and Rick Stevens and Naomi. And Brett Bell for all standing up. I know sometimes that can be intimidating and we appreciate you standing up. And speaking with us and also our city employees, Andrew Devaney and Adalina. Adalina does do a great job. The recycling center is very impressive. I visit it frequently. And they do work hard. She has also two employees out there that work really hard with her. Um, and that, they're, who are the employees? It's. Zach and.
Zachary and.
And Dylan, so they also work hard. Um, I'm excited about the strategic plan. If you don't plan, then you're failing to plan. Or you're, you know, if you fail to plan, you're planning to fail basically. And so that's very important that we have this strategic plan and I appreciate the work that you've done on that and also Marcy, thank you. Thank you very much for that. And once again, thank you guys for being here and we hope to see you at the next city council meeting. And if we will.
I'm sorry to violate the quorum.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Fielder.
We just need a motion, a second.
Okay. Can we have a?
I'm hoping that we allow Mr. Fielder to speak.
A second? I'll second. Okay.
I'm in. My name is Guy Fielder.
Wait, Mr. Fielder, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, alright.
So my name is Guy Fielder. We own property in three different wards, I think, uh, two, five, and. I don't remember the other one, but anyway, I'm sorry. I was looking at this stuff and. We're putting in a zero-scape garden. We're putting in all native plants. Uh, we have a new person that's appointed that's environmental and all of this. And the list of trees and things that she listed up there, those are not indigenous species. The principle of unintended consequences would state that we don't need to be considering introducing. Non-indigenous species into our community. And I would like to get that point across before we're past the point of no return. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.